Welcome to the town of Corder Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, April 27th, 2021. Mr. Wolf, will you please call the roll?
Sure, we'll start with Commissioner Metcalf.
Here.
Okay, Commissioner Bundy.
Here.
Chairman Chase.
Here.
Commissioner Bendel.
Here.
And Commissioner Rizzo.
Here.
Great.
All right, thank you. At this time of every meeting, we open it up to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you have something you would like to talk about, you have three minutes to do so, and we'll open it up to that public comment right now. So remember, this is for something that is not on tonight's agenda. Tracy, do you have any emails or hands up?
I don't see any hands raised. We have about four attendees on, no emails.
Okay. All right, so being that this is a single agenda meeting and a special meeting, we think that, I think that there's probably not any public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So we'll close that portion of this and we'll head right over to this business item, which is Joint Planning Commission and Technical Advisory Working Group Workshop to discuss the Objective Design and Development Standards, the ODS Toolkit. And Mr. Wolf, this is yours to kick off.
Great, well, thank you Chair Chase and Commissioners and Working Group members. Very excited tonight to have this joint workshop and discussion regarding the Objective Design and Development Standards for multifamily housing development in Corder Madera. Something, as I think you guys know, we've been working on for, I think, right around 18 months at this point, back in October of 2019. And you know, where we've been trying to really generate some interest in this, this issue and this topic from members of the public. We have a few folks on, so that's great. It's good to see Cheryl and Suzie and one of our own, Phil Boyle. So hi, Phil, and a new, a new name that I'm not familiar with. So David, Zach, it looks like, and we will be sure to get to some public comment later today as well or this evening. Maybe you can start. We have a great group of folks here, and I do want to do some introductions for the sake of members of the public and also really our Planning Commission Commissioners should get to know our Working Group members. And you're likely already familiar with them, but just to introduce you formally to the folks that we've been working with most closely on this project and our consultants have as well. So maybe what I'll do first is just do some quick introductions of our Working Group members and rather than sort of, I guess we have some time. We don't have a tremendous amount of members of the public on the call right now, but I'd just like to go around quickly and introduce some folks. Our Working Group members, and maybe I think we have this on the next slide, so we can actually. Yeah, here we go. Our Mayor Eli Beckman. There you go, raise your, yeah, that's great, just raise your hand. Phyllis Metcalf also obviously on the Planning Commission and on our, she's our Planning Commission Representative on the Technical Advisory Working Group. Eli is representing the council. Bill Rose, who's a planner from the city of Santa Rosa and also a resident of Corder Madera, of course. Unfortunately, Dan McCadden is, is in Italy at the moment, and so it's 4:00 AM for him. He isn't able to join, but he has been providing some good comments from the perspective of being a multifamily housing developer. Also, of course, a former Planning Commissioner and Corder Madera resident, Patty Stolier, who has our community representative on the Technical Working Group, having lived right next door to a multifamily housing project that was developed recently, the enclave on Casa Buena. Rich Perlstein, a local architect. Hi, Rich, how are you? And, and of course, myself and Martha, where are you, Martha? Martha is going to be giving some staff presentation as well tonight. And then I think all of the Planning Commissioners, you know, Peter, you've heard from Phyllis, you know, Bob Bundy. I'm just, Bob's there and Margaret Bendel. And Jim Rizzo, who's also our architect on the commission, so. I'm sorry, on the, yeah, on the commission, so. I also definitely want to introduce the team from Opticos, who will be giving the presentation or the bulk of the presentation this evening and helping to answer some questions. One of the main reasons we wanted to have this workshop and do it joint was to bring our consultants team to this meeting and have them sort of help explain some, some of, give an overview of the toolkit itself and then help direct some of the commerce, conversation around implementation and some of the zones and where we can potentially look to incorporate some of those zones into Corder Madera. But let's start with Stefan Pellegrini, who I think some of you have met. Do we have? Where's Tony? I'm trying to find Tony Perez. There you are, Tony. You want to introduce Singay, hopefully, it's Saliki. She's on the call, I know, as well, has been a key member of the team as well, I know. And then we have Dave Javid, who many of you have worked with before, from plan to place, who will help with facilitation and help with getting comments and and also, and did I forget anyone else? Paul Kronzer, also from Plan to Place. And then Tracy, oh, Anne Danforth, hello, I should introduce you, our town Assistant Town Attorney as well as, as always. And so helpful, hopefully that's helpful for members of the public that are here. Again, just going back to the first slide, we're gonna basically start with, I've done the welcome and introductions. Martha's gonna take it from there and then we'll get into Opticos, their presentation, which will include really an overview and where we are in the process, an overview of the toolkit, get into this discussion of zones. And we really, as we discussed in the staff report, are trying to get some direction from the Working Group and then the Commission on somewhat of a mapping exercise of how do we go from this large toolkit and then start to narrow it down and think about what zones we want to apply to our multifamily housing districts? And that's gonna try to be the focus of it, but of course, this is open for a wider discussion as well. And of course, we want to hear from the public, members of the public who may be here, that would be great to hear from you. And then we'll get to next steps. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, well, I did want to just touch on this, I'll turn it over to Martha. Again, we, this is just sort of showing where we are in terms of the number of meetings. Again, we've been at this for some time, but let's, let's get started and I'll turn it over to you, Martha, to take it from here.
Thank you, Adam. And I would like to point out at the last Planning Commission meeting, the Commission provided some, some questions that they had on the toolkit and that information has been provided to the consultant and incorporated into tonight's presentation. Next slide. So the town was awarded $160,000 SB2 Planning Grant in 2019. And we've been working collaboratively with other Marin County jurisdictions on a variety of projects. And one of the projects is obviously the Objective Design and Development Standards projects, which we are discussing tonight, and the bulk of the funds that the town received has been used on this particular project. Next slide. Several state laws have been adopted in recent years that allow for by right and streamlined approvals for multifamily and mixed-use housing projects based on satisfying objective development standards. I've included two of the notable bills on the slide, Senate Bill 35 and Senate Bill 330. Senate Bill 35 became law on January 1st, 2018. And this requires a streamlined and ministerial approval process for certain housing projects. What this means is that if a jurisdiction receives an application and they're subject to this legislation, the review of the application is not done at Planning Commission or council level, but rather it's reviewed by staff and staff is verifying that the project meets objective development standards. This legislation does require a jurisdiction to quickly approve eligible projects, and there are timelines that are included in the legislation about how, how much time jurisdiction has to review a project. Projects must satisfy a variety of requirements, including affordability requirements, and also must meet objective standards that a jurisdiction has adopted. The California Department of Housing and Community Development determines if a jurisdiction is subject to SB 35. And it's based on the number of building permits that have been issued by a jurisdiction, and this includes building permits for affordable housing. Corder Madera is currently not subject to SB 35, but it is very likely that we will be in the next housing element cycle. Our draft regional housing needs for the next cycle is over 700 units. And the town does not control when these units are developed, and it's very likely that we will fall behind reaching these numbers at some point in the next cycle, at which point we will be subject to this legislation. The other P, the other legislation I've included is Senate Bill 330. This is known as the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. It was adopted in 2019 and went into effect on January 1st, 2020. The regulations will sunset on January 1st, 2025, unless of course they are extended before that time. And this legislation precludes affected cities from rezoning or imposing new, new standards that reduce housing capacity. And a jurisdiction cannot apply new design standards to housing projects that were adopted after January 2020, unless those standards are objective standards. This applies to residential development projects and mixed-use projects in which two-thirds of the floor area is for residential uses. And it also includes provisions to eliminate delays by limiting the number of public hearings. And there obviously is a chance that there will be future legislation that will continue to limit a local jurisdiction's control in reviewing housing projects. In 2019, there was a housing bill that would have allowed duplexes and single-family zones. And while this did not pass, it is likely that we could see a similar bill in a future legislative session. Next slide. The planning staff has recommended a two-step approach to implementing the toolkit. This includes both near-term and long-term actions. Both the Working Group and the Planning Commission have discussed this, this implementation strategy and both have agreed with what staff was recommending, which is to do both near-term and then long-term actions. The near-term actions would address existing and potential state housing legislation. And it also meets the timing requirements of the SB2 Planning Grant. The town will not receive reimbursements until we adopt the Objective Design and Development Standards. And during this first phase, the toolkit would only apply to qualifying multifamily housing projects. There are a variety of actions that would need to be done before we adopt the toolkit in this near-term state, which include identifying which zone to apply to each of the areas in Corder Madera that allow multifamily housing and also customizing the toolkit to either modify some of the standards or remove some of the existing standards. And we anticipate it'll be approximately six months until the near-term actions are completed. The next step is the long-term actions, and this would be undertaken concurrently with the housing element. And as part of our next housing element, there will be a lot of community dialogue and discussions about how best to plan for housing in Corder Madera. And this will obviously include extensive outreach, outreach and engagement. And the housing element is due to the state on January 2023, so that the timeline for this long-term coincides with when the housing element is due. Next slide. At the last meeting, I believe one of the Commissioners raised a question of, you know, what would happen in the event that we don't adopt this toolkit? What types of standards would we use to, to evaluate qualifying multifamily projects? So these standards are the existing objective standards that are in one of the commercial zoning districts. So in the absence of a toolkit, we would rely on standards such as setbacks and height, floor area, density, parking and uses, and there are also very limited standards around lighting and screening and some landscaping requirements as well. But as you can see, the, the list of standards is pretty limited of what we currently have. Next slide. And on the next two slides, slides I've included a variety of standards that are in the draft toolkit. And while this is not an exhaustive list, it does show kind of the variety of standards that are included. And it, the toolkit includes standards related to building form, parking, landscaping, retaining walls, land, privacy, slope standards, building types and architectural design. So there are a lot of standards, and I know it can feel a little overwhelming at times, but the purpose of all of these standards are to ensure that we have the type of development that we want to see in our community. Next slide, and again, this is a follow-up to the previous slide, which shows some of the objective standards in the toolkit. And I will say like for the, the bottom three bullet points, they like the architectural design, there's seven different types of architectural designs within the toolkit, and each of those includes a variety of standards. So this is, you know, it's kind of the tip of the iceberg of what is included in the toolkit. So as you can see, the number of standards in the toolkit far exceed the objective standards that we have in our zoning ordinance. Next slide. And I now would like to turn it over to Stefan Pellegrini with Opticos Design, who will start the, the presentation for Opticos.
Thank you very much, Martha, and thanks, Adam, and good evening to everyone. I'm, again, I'm Stefan Pellegrini, in principle with Opticos Design. And Tony and I are going to be presenting this material to you this evening. So I'm gonna speak for a series of slides, I'll be passing it over to Tony. Tony will be passing it back to me and then Tony will round out the, the presentation at the end. But this is an overview of what we're going to be talking about tonight. We're gonna give you a little bit of background on the project, how we got here to this point, and give you an overview of the timeline of that process. And then we'll spend some time talking to you about the different components of the Objective Design Standards Toolkit, identifying some topic areas for discussion and then talking specifically about what we anticipate is, is, is important to remember when applying the, the toolkit to, to the town. Next slide, please, Martha. So this was a three-phase project. We actually began in the winter of 2019, working closely with town staff, with the Advisory Committee, as well as the staffs of the other participating jurisdictions in the county. We started with a background and analysis that led us to develop an existing conditions report, which I'll touch on this evening. A place and building types atlas, which really helped provide direction for the Objective Design Standards Toolkit that was prepared over the summer. There were a number of items that we worked on independently with different jurisdictions last summer in support of that work. And you can see here, we are sort of in the middle of Phase 3. And this is sort of an important pivot point in the process. The toolkit has been delivered to the jurisdictions, and now we're working with a variety of jurisdictions, and some of them are working independently to apply the relevant elements of the toolkit locally to their local jurisdiction through processes such as this one. Next slide, please, Martha. So just sort of going back, and Martha touched on many of these components when she talked about the framework for state law that, that, that brings us to this topic today. But you know, first and foremost, that objective standards are designed to work with projects that actually qualify for streamlining and by right processing. And these can include multifamily projects as well as mixed-use projects that are a minimum ratio of residential over ground floor, commercial or services. And these, of course, relate to certain kinds of projects, SB 35 projects, for example, that might be proposed. And they can also be used sort of in a broader way to provide replacement zoning and standards in situations where the existing zoning is not entirely objective or to Martha's point, might be lacking in terms of sort of what's on the books today. And so we designed the toolkit for sort of both of those purposes, to respond to the by right projects, but also to sort of think about this as a set of tools that can be applied, particularly in support of these kinds of projects that are looking for streamlining through the housing streamline acts. Next slide, please, Martha. Thank you. So this is just an overview of some of the things that we did working with, with the Planning Director's Working Group to get to where we are tonight. And I'm gonna touch on sort of each one of these briefly before we sort of talk a little bit about the Objective Design Standards Toolkit. So I talked a little about the existing conditions analysis, and that was an initial opportunity for us to look closely at the sites that the different jurisdictions were looking at, that they saw as being opportunity sites for housing. The analysis of that work actually led to what we refer to as the place types and building types atlas. This gave us an opportunity to look at all of the sites that the different jurisdictions had provided and put them into sort of different contexts and categories, really to sort of help justify and sort of help understand whether or not a series of zone districts that were created to work across the county could be applied, actually meet the needs of the individual jurisdictions. So the place types atlas provides recommendations for all the jurisdictions, but it also provides individualized recommendations for Corte Madera, looking at the environments where the town is expecting housing to occur and making some recommendations about the pieces of the toolkit that are appropriate to apply to the environments that we see within the town. So now I'm gonna pivot a little bit to the toolkit organization. And you can see here, there are 12 chapters included in the toolkit. And I'm gonna just take one moment just to bring up my notes and and I'll go through these together. So, and we start with a preamble, which provides a basis for the Objective Design Standards. There's an introduction that introduces the zoning framework. There are a series of zone districts that include objective direction for how buildings can be placed on sites and that a sort of specific direction with regards to the zoning envelope that can be possible. There's direction for allowed uses and standards that are specific to particular uses. And then there are a series of supplemental standards that address items that are relevant to design sites. Those might be things like site planning, landscaping, screening, for example. There are standards that are specific to building types, and we'll talk a little bit more about that moving forward this evening. There are standards for frontage that guide how the buildings actually interface and meet the public right-of-way and the street. There are standards for architectural design, for signage, for large sites that actually might require subdivision into streets, locks, large projects that actually might be complex and mixed-use, as well as guidance for administration. And then definitions that are designed to supplement the definitions in your existing zoning ordinance with new terms that are included only in the toolkit today. And now I'm gonna pass the baton over to Tony. And Tony is gonna talk a little bit about some of the key changes that were incurred to the toolkit as they transitioned through the review process.
Thanks, Stefan. Good evening. So the, the, the key changes I'm talking about are, are the result of comments from all the jurisdictions after we submitted the, the draft, which, the admin draft, which was in last October. So between October and February, when we submitted the final, we made a lot of minor changes here and there, refinements and clarifications, but these items here on the slide were the major pieces of new or, or additional content that we added. So for example, the pocket neighborhood building type, there, there are, there are many building types in this, in this toolkit that you can use and and several jurisdictions asked for this one to be added, and it's basically you know, a collection of, of different building types around an open space that you can organize to organize houses or duplexes or maybe even a fourplex and provide a, a large open space in the middle. We also added the contemporary architectural style. There were a number of jurisdictions that, that asked for, for that, because that's what they see a lot in the projects they're receiving, so that's been added to the toolkit. The slope standards existed in the, in the admin draft, but we, we added a lot more information about, about cross slopes and about very steep slopes. You know, over, over 30%, 20 to 30% that area. And then we also talked, talked about how bonus height would work on slopes. And so that was added to the standards. And then the adjustments section already existed, but we coordinated it with all the new information that we were adding, and we also added more findings to that, to that process. And just in case you, you're not aware of that section, this is the flexibility part of the, of the toolkit, where even though you have to have objective standards and you don't get to apply discretion, there are situations, and they're all, they're all based on existing conditions on, on a site that couldn't be foreseen or issues of needing to adjust for something that's already there, say a, a stream or, or a tree or, you know, roots of a, of a heritage tree, utilities, things like that. And so you can use adjustments to adjust the standards, and so we just boosted that up. And then a brand-new section on privacy standards between the side yards, interior side yards of buildings. And then lastly, public frontage standards, which are standards for, from, between the property line and the edge of the curb and how that's detailed. And so we provided standards for how that can be done in different contexts. Next slide. So a couple of, a couple of just orientation things here about the toolkit upfront. Not sure if, if you've looked at this yet, but we provided a guide, we call it a quick code guide, and it takes you through the steps of how to apply the code, the toolkit to a property, and it gives you a step-by-step process of the different sections of the toolkit that apply. Next. So we received from staff a number of items that, that they wanted us to bring up and, and address here with you tonight. And so these eight are, are in the following slides. And so what I'm gonna do is provide our response and our background on each of these in a brief way so that we can end the presentation and get into a discussion with you. But I just want to let you know that we're aware of these, and, and so this is where we're, we're going next in, in the presentation. Next slide. So the, the process of customizing the toolkit is, is, is what the town is, is in now. There are, I guess you could just take it and adopt it as it is, but it's always been intended that each town, each town and each city, and the county for that matter, would take it now in its final form, and now it's ready, ready to be customized and adapted to your liking. So you might, you might adjust, for example, certain numbers. You might knock out certain elements that you don't find necessary for your community. You might rephrase words or sentences. There's a number, there are a number of things that you can do to customize this to your town. And so the, the task that we're in now, that the part of the SB two planning grant that's, is funding a service called the screen check draft, that's what we're doing right now. This is the beginning of that process to work with you and staff to customize it to, to your needs. And as, and as Adam and Martha said early on in the presentation, the town is pursuing a two phase approach. And so our assignment is to customize it for your purposes of phase one right now. Next slide is about the half story question. Sorry, there's not a big segue, a good segue between that topic and this one, but it was the order that we had. So we're going from a big topic to this one. But there was a question about what does half story mean? And so you'll notice in the toolkit, the diagram on the left there is showing a dimension line to the highest E, that's C, and then D is overall height. And in between there, you can see an attic outlined above the second floor there with a dormer coming out. And the half story is basically like you can see in the photo on the right. It's, it's an occupied attic. It's, it's another way to say that there's roof, the, the, the volume underneath the roof is occupied. And so we, we recommend this way of, of regulating so that somebody could actually have a small third story, but it's all within the volume of the roof and people wouldn't perceive it as a three story building. As, as opposed to trying to do a three story building and then trying to get the height lower, lower. And it doesn't work and it never looks right. So the other thing to know about this is that the, the half story is allowed. It's not required. You could build a roof up there and not occupy it and it would be fine. But this allows you to occupy it without being penalized for another story. Next slide. The residential development in the flood plain. You know, we, we need to get into a discussion with you about this to understand more in detail what, what you're dealing with or what we're dealing with on this. But you know, there are a couple different, different ways to go here and that the toolkit can begin to address this. Number one, you see highlighted on, on the, in the yellow outline there in the middle of the slide. And then the, the diagrams on the right. There's a whole section, a whole chapter in the toolkit about frontage types. And as Stefan was saying, that's how the, the building facade connects and interfaces with the sidewalk. And so those frontage types can actually provide an elevated entry to buildings. If the, if the building is needed to be elevated because of, 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 of water, of water or flooding issues. If you need to elevate it a whole story, you know, that's, that can be done as well. But there's something in between that, that, well, there are all kinds of options in between. The other, the other thing is that you see on the diagram there, you see the G in the middle of the slide. That is, that is pointing to an area that the toolkit requires to be habitable space in the ground floor. And so if it turns out that in some areas you have such a flooding issue to address that the entire or most of the, most of the ground story needs to be nonhabitable, then you would just need to go into that standard and make that clarification. You see that G there. So just all this to say is that we're aware of it and that we've had, we have a couple of ways that we think we can deal with it, but we need more information to actually customize it for you. Next slide. Parking for large mixed use projects. So this is a table out of chapter five in the general to all section of the, of the toolkit. And it's basically a sharing table. It's, it's, it's saying that, for example, if you have an, an office development and it has residential in it, you take the total number of spaces required by the toolkit and you use that 1.4. Let's see if I can draw on the screen here real fast. No, I can't. But if you go over to office and you see residential in the first row, office in the third column, and you see the 1.4, you would take the total number of, yeah, right there. You would take the total number of spaces required by the toolkit for parking, onsite parking. And you would divide it by that factor. And the factor is a sharing factor. I don't have all the calculus on how these factors were derived, but I can tell you it's the place where they come from, the, the place where we, we have been using this table. It's been using versions of this table for the past 25 years. And it's based on just experience with mixed use projects. So again, you know, in the, in the, in the spirit of customization for, for the town, there are a couple of options. One is to adjust these factors further. Another is to remove it. Sometimes this kind of thing is, is a little tough for communities and they want to do their own factors. So you, we can apply those, but that's the intent of this and that's how it works. Next slide. Pervious area and parking lots. Again, this is in chapter five, that general to all chapter. And this again is our recommendation of the thresholds for when to require the parking area instead of, we call it a parking area instead of a parking lot. A little higher aspiration for that. But when, when landscaping is required in, in a parking area, and you can see there are different thresholds there for 10 or fewer, there's nothing. But then as soon as you get 11 or more, there's some kind of landscaping required. And then the details of that. And so the pervious area, we, we have covered that in another section of the, of the, of the toolkit. And I'm, I'm drawing a blank right now as to what specific section it is. But I do remember working on that. And that, that amount is customizable again. I don't remember the, the amount of, of area that we were specifying, but again, if you think it's too low, you can crank it up. If you think it's too high, you can crank it down. Next slide. Back to Stefan.
Thanks, Tony. I'm going to talk about the last two, two topics before passing it back to Tony. I think there was a question about the architectural design standards chapter and how that's intended to be used. And of course, this chapter provides fairly specific standards for six architectural styles that were sort of derived from our initial analysis and research in it with, within the participating jurisdictions. And the, the goal behind this chapter, first and foremost, is to ensure that projects that don't have the luxury of discretionary review. And those are sort of the quote unquote by right projects that, that Martha mentioned that would require staff review and only the application of objective standards. The concept is that those projects would be able to choose a style out of these six styles and then comply with the standards for that style in producing an outcome. And so what we tried to do here was to establish standards for what we saw as the essential elements that could ensure that a project, again, that didn't have the luxury of discretionary review, that the outcome would be context sensitive and sort of acceptable to, you know, again, without the luxury of that discretionary review. So that's the way that this chapter is sort of intended to be utilized. There could be some situations where applicants would want to propose something outside of the parameters within this chapter. And that, you know, for projects that would continue to have the luxury of design review and public hearings and working with the planning commission. That could absolutely happen outside of the parameters of this chapter. So hopefully that sort of helps to clarify how this chapter sort of is intended to be used. And then the last thing we'll talk about is the, the density bonus. And if there's sort of a need for additional standards. And what we sought to do in the toolkit was calibrate the zoning envelope in each zone district that the toolkit provides so that there is a base height that is, would be measured for projects that are not seeking a bonus. And then there is a bonus height. And what we did is that we calibrated that base and bonus to match or be incredibly comparable to the 35% density bonus that California state law provides. And some of you may know that in December of last year, there was an additional bill that was passed that actually provided for up to a 50% density bonus in for certain types of, of affordable projects. And we have taken that into account as well. And we can speak with, I would say, general confidence that this base and bonus strategy can be accommodated, can also accommodate the 50% density bonus. And so that there is sort of that provision, it's sort of built in to, to the, to the zone districts and sort of how that works. And to Tony's point before, you know, sometimes that actually might mean that a building could actually obtain an additional half story. As you move more intensely through the zones, it could be an additional story or potentially even two additional stories. But again, that's sort of been calibrated sort of carefully to the zone districts that the toolkit provides. Pass it back to Tony.
So a last, last group of slides here about the, about chapter three and the, and the zones. So it's been our, it's been our recommendation to jurisdictions when they begin the, the customization process to really begin here. And we, we are, we've been working with Belvedere. You might want to talk with them about their experience, but that's how we started with them. And, and it's really worked because all the, all the standards are aimed at producing, you know, what you see in this drawing on this, the beginning page of the zoning district. All these standards are aimed at, at generating that physical environment, that physical character. So if you can imagine all, you know, all those standards are reverse engineered out of that physical character, that, that's how it works. So we try to go back and forth between what the standards need to do to produce that and what the, what the, that drawing is telling us that the standards need to do. So it's a back and forth. And so when you, when you select your zones, then you are, you have a, a level of predictability about the physical outcomes that those zoning standards will gen- will generate. That's the idea. And so once you do that, once you select your zones out of this whole toolkit, that narrows down a lot of the content right away because you're not going to need some of the content because some of those other zoning districts were, were using that content. So basically, and just a quick overview, the, the zones provide the standards for where the building can go and where the parking can go. Where the parking can go is, is super important. We see a lot of zoning text and zoning codes prepared that don't address parking location and it becomes a problem. Equally important, height and massing. And then Stefan was talking about bonus height. And then the ground floor frontage in relationship to the streetscape. And then all the supplemental standards supporting it. Next slide. So for Cortez Madera, there are eight, there are eight zones that, that are, that you can choose from in the toolkit that represent all the different environments that exist or will be necessary to address all the jurisdictions, housing needs across the, the whole county of Marin. But in Cortez Madera, there are three of the eight that we're recommending based on what Stefan was saying earlier, the place type analysis and our, and our understanding of what, of what your, what the general plan allows and, and all that. So right now, the, the first one is, is there, you can see outlined in that orange. It's a zone that allows two and a half stories and house scale buildings. And house scale buildings are just as you see in the diagram there. Buildings that are the size of houses. In this case, they happen to have two units in them, four units in them, maybe six units. It depends. There's a menu of choices, as you've probably seen now in reviewing the, the toolkit. The next zone is, is the more tense zone that allows three stories and larger house scale buildings. Next slide. Next slide. And then the last zone is, is a, is a, a mixed use. They're all, they all allow different uses, but this one is more of your conventional or, or your traditional mixed use, main street type of, of, of zone. And this one is meant to, to fit in your, in your main street area, in your historic main street area. But you can see all the ones that we are not recommending. I just want to make that super clear. There are, we are working with, well, let's go to the next slide and it'll be more clear here. So you, you can see that we've coordinated the recommended zones to those areas in the place type atlas. And you, you want to take some time and study this after the meeting, but two things are happening here. We're looking at the, the physical character that exists, but we're also looking at what the zoning and the general plan allow now. And so that if, if the maximum height is, is 30 feet, for example, then that's, that's, for example, you can see that first zone there, we're using it and recommending it in four different areas. And it has a 30 foot max overall height. And that three story zone, we're recommending it for two of the areas right now. Again, this is all phase one recommendation. You know, another year from now, or whenever you get, get into the, the phase two, there'll be other, other nuances to this. But for right now, for phase one, we're recommending that, that three story zone be used in two areas. And that currently has a 36 foot max overall height. And then that main street zone, it, we're only recommending that right now where in your historic main street with 30 foot maximum overall with two and a half stories. Next slide. And then lastly, the, the, some of the sites that, that you have right now, that you've seen in the place type atlas and on the previous slide where they were shown in gray and identified as other. Those were large enough, those are large enough to be turned into more than just one site. And as Stefan was saying, broken down into new blocks and new streetscapes as opposed to just one side with, with one or two driveways into, into a dead end of a project. So this, this, this portion of the toolkit provides all the standards on how to, how to systematically do that. Next slide. And then lastly, we were asked by staff on, you know, hey, we're not there yet, but if, if in case or in case that state legislation requires that single family zones allow more than, more than houses as, as is, as is happening in some, some other states, which zone should we have in our back pocket to be able to apply from the toolkit? And so we're recommending that this T three edge neighborhood zone be the one. It's a 30, 30 foot max overall height. House scale buildings, again, it's houses, the, the building types that this allows are houses, duplexes. And, and I'm, I'm blanking on the last type right now. But it's, it's the least amount of choices among all the, all the other zones. And that's intentional because it's, the intent here is to emphasize the existing neighborhood of single unit houses.
Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Stefan and team. We are now going to transition to public comment. So Adams, you want to have something?
Yeah, just, just real quick. And thanks Stefan and Tony for that presentation. Just so you know, one of the things we asked them to provide was sort of some of the comments and those. Just so you know, one of the things we asked them to provide was sort of some of the comments and those individual slides and topics. Were related to some of the comments we heard from the planning commissioners at the last meeting or in the meeting before. And so we wanted to have them address those upfront, but moving now into public comment, what we wanted to do is get, first and foremost, allow. Our, our members of the public who've been waiting patiently to, to be able to. Speak and then hear from the working group, technical advisory working group. And then. The, the planning commission and then engage in a discussion amongst the many members that are, are participants tonight, so. I just wanted to lay that out and then let's get started, but I think one of the things that we're trying to do. With comments is move the ball sort of down the court, so to speak. With respect to the zones, which I think is a good segue, Tony, just really, that was a, I think, very clear way of explaining what those zones are intended to. Do and, and the recommendations that Opticos and Tony and Stefan have made. In that regard, in consultation with staff is sort of the starting point and we'd love to hear some feedback and. Potentially some direction at the end of the meeting on that specific sort of mapping exercise and, and the zones that were recommended. So with that, and please member of the, we'd love to hear from you as, as well on those issues, so. I'll turn it back over to Dave, just wanted to insert, insert myself into there for a second, thanks.
Sounds good, thanks Adam. So yeah, as Adam mentioned, we're going to do a round of public comments before we get to the working group discussion and followed by planning commission. And if I could ask any member of the public that would like to speak to go ahead and use the hand raised function, that should be at the bottom of your window. You'll either just have something that literally says raise hand or it might be in your participant window. You could find it there, so I'm just going to wait maybe fifteen seconds, twenty seconds here to see if we have any members of the public. That would like to contribute before we move on to the next section. All right. Well, it doesn't look like there are any now, but maybe if there is time at the end and folks have some, some thoughts, we can come back to the public. And allow some time near the end of the meeting. So with that, as we just mentioned. We wanted to open it up to the working group initially and really kind of, we're treating it as a round robin, we'd love to hear from each of you. But definitely more of kind of informal discussion as well, with any questions that you might have for the project team. And then from there, we'll transition to the planning commissioners to have an opportunity to provide comment. And Phyllis, since you are sitting on both, we ask if, if you want to kind of wait and be that transition for, for us from the. Working group to the planning commissioners, that would be great. So with that, I just want to open it up for anyone that might have any questions, comments. We could use the same format with raise hand or you can just wave at me, but, and we can unmute you and get started, so who would like to start? And if no one raised their hand, I might just start calling on folks to start the round.
And I will say, we also, we, you know, let us know if you'd like some specific slides up or reference certain images. That may be helpful for some of the questions or clarifications you want to ask or some direction and comments you want to provide.
Great point, Adam, and Adam mentioned some of the discussion topics, we see them on the screen as well, happy to read them out if needed, but Patty, I saw your hand raised.
Yeah, I totally agree with the suggested zones and I was thinking about the. The duplex idea and this is something that came up at the town chat this afternoon and that was. How frequently people want to add on a story to their home, but what's to say that couldn't become a duplex? So I'm wondering if we want to maybe fold in some duplexy ideas into the initial stuff instead of keeping it in our back pocket for later.
Thank you, Patty, Adam is nodding his head, sounds like that's, that's agreed, thanks, thanks for that. If you all don't mind, I'm actually going to go ahead and stop sharing screen just so we can all see each other unless we need the questions up. Okay, who would like to go next, any other thoughts? Margaret, Bill, Rich, yes, Rich.
My hands there. So I guess, interesting comment just now about possibly wrapping in. Some objective standards about duplexes, so thinking about, and I think we're all thinking, and we've heard rumors about state legislature. Making passes at trying to implement or require. Duplexes and single family or higher and the. So for the, the, for the three zones that we, that we're adopting, the, the images look very idyllic, but I guess the question is. If the state were to mandate higher density, higher F A Rs could say. In, within, within single family properties, do we need, at this time, need to be anticipating? With the form impacts of that greater density might be. And I'm not, I mean, that's, that's as far as I've taken this, I'm just wondering, because you know, the, the perspectives that were on the screen. Show very generous front setbacks and very generous side setbacks and much of the town is not that. So I'm wondering if we just need to have some visuals or some way of anticipating that greater density.
I think, yeah, I mean, oh, good.
Yeah, and the other thing I was going to throw up in a different location, so thinking about, for instance, the Tamil Vista quarter and maybe I'm not as. Is schooled on current thinking, but is there, do we need to be anticipating? Height limits greater than thirty five feet or four stories along there? And if so, does that wrap neatly into the, into the, the denser of the three zones that we're considering, or do we need something else?
Yeah, I, I, I think we, yeah, we do this round robin, I, I think those are really good comments. On the first one, it's interesting and, and obviously. We can look deeper, the, the one that is on the, sort of the table this year, it, it looks like it's Senate Bill nine. Related to sort of allowing. Additional density in single family areas of town, to this point, most of the. Legislation. Has allowed for local jurisdictions to include objective development standards. And that's why we're sort of doing this, with the exception actually of the accessory dwelling units, which. Did reduce and said, here are the setbacks you have to allow for that type of. Structure, an eight hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit can be very close to your, your side and rear setback, so. I don't know if anybody here on this call has analyzed that SB nine well enough to actually know if it actually. Eliminates our ability to include objective standards for how it's actually where those structures can be located or not. But I'd like to anticipate at this point that we can. Maintain our ability to do that and then as we learn more, we may have to adjust it based on what is allowed or not. So that's how to respond to that and then, and then I do want to get to the Tamil Vista one, because I, I think many on this call were part of that process and I was. Intimately part of that rezoning and we actually, that's one area of town where we really tried to. Almost create a form based code in a way and Dave, I forget, Dave was here and so in a sense. I still have questions myself about how, whether we necessarily need to apply. Zones for that particular area, because we went through a fairly. Rigorous exercise of talking about a neighborhood zone that fronts on Tamil, Tamil Vista Boulevard and relates to the single family homes across the street. And then behind that, closer to the highway, we stepped it up to allow up to thirty five, forty feet. For the commercial projects behind that want to get, you know, visibility to the highway. We talked about sort of only allowing one curb cut and the parking goes behind and things like that. So it's actually, that is an area we've done a fair amount of. Work on creating sort of objective standards and from a site planning and design standpoint. And so I, you know, I, I think that's an area to look at whether we want to actually. How, whether we want to overlay additional requirements there in the toolkit. And, and how we would even do so if we wanted to, would be my second question, given the underlying zoning and maybe Dave, I don't know if you. Just, it's by fortuitous that we have you with you, because as you know, Dave was sort of our urban design consultant on that project and, and. At the time and, and now you've switched more to the facilitator role here, but, but you were really helping us, you know, and, and. And we were going back and forth on some of those concepts and, and standards for Tamil Vista Boulevard.
Yeah, no, I think you described it perfectly, Adam, I think the graphics that we put together as well might kind of help identify how that step back would work in the densities and.
Yeah, I think I might start with not recommending a, we have a zone for that seven property area. Just because we have some good rules in place that were vetted fairly recently. But there are other parts of, as you go further. Plaza area that we'd, we'd want to look at. But thanks, yeah, those are, those are good things and, and you know, what we're going to do, Steph, Martha and I are really in, probably with the help of. After this, we'll take these comments and really take a first crack at trying to customize this. And narrow it down, so it's a little bit more manageable and, and have you something really to sink your teeth in, that's not this huge document. And we can start getting into those specific decisions.
Thanks, yeah, Phyllis, did you have thoughts to throw in there?
Yes, I know you want me to go at the end, but I think what has come up is important of what Rich brought up and Patty.
Sure.
As part of the research that I do on housing, I just wanted to mention three current bills that are dangerously close to being passed and becoming law. One of them is SB eight. And that extends the HCA sunset of twenty twenty five to twenty thirty. Martha mentioned that in her report, the problem is, or what makes it worse. Is it reaches out. To include single family residences. We're, so all the work that you're doing is going to have to keep that in mind. And it takes away even more local planning decisions, so we really should be putting. Looking at single family residences as we do this and then it goes into, the next one is SB nine. And that's one that Adam mentioned for a minute, that essentially eliminates single family zoning. And what it does, it allows development of two units on a property, which would be a duplex. And what is even worse, in my personal opinion. Is it allows you to divide a single family parcel into two equal parcels of no less than twenty four, of no less than twelve hundred square feet each. So any parcel that is twenty fours hundred square feet can be divided in half and two duplexes can then be put on. So that would be a, a total. Of, you know, four. Housing on a sing, what had been single family will now have four. And the last one is SB ten. All of these come out of a witness committee, he's not going to give up, he brings this up at different times under different numbers, if it doesn't pass this year. It'll be back next year, so we really have to be aware of it. Ten affects the density and would allow a parcel to be rezoned for up to ten units of residential density. If the parcel is located in what is referred to as a transit rich area or a job rich area. And the bill itself defines what those are, I mean, transit bridge, if I remember correctly, I don't have the bill in front of me, is within a half and mile of transit. I forget off the top of my head how they define job bridge, but as all of this happens. These three bills, none of them specifically provide for affordable housing, which is what this whole, what had been talked about is the whole reason for this. And it doesn't protect the environment, there are no sequel studies done. And it doesn't address the infrastructure needs, either the expansion of the maintenance. So it's very important that all of these, this toolkit that is put together. Contains references and readiness to add in these elements, which we're going to be facing if not. You know, starting January one of twenty twenty two, it could be twenty twenty three, they're not going away. And there are a lot more, but these are, I think, are the three most egregious that cannot be ignored as we look at what's going to happen. As more and more of local discretion is taken away.
Thank you for that, Phyllis, I don't know if Adam or team had any follow up thoughts on that.
No, I just, I would, I would just think it's, that's what's, I think, really great about having this toolkit and the variety of zones. That allow us to sort of put in place some objective standards where we may need them and pull from it. You know, we, we may start with a limited number of zones adopted, but we can always have this toolkit are at the ready to sort of go back to. In the future and maybe it's in the very near future when we come back to you again and include things like. Standards for single family zoning districts or areas or play if there's a need to. As we do the housing element, you know, and we're going to need to look at increased density in certain areas. We may need to ratchet up in one area that looks or on a particular site. So it, it, it has that flexibility in there, we just have to pick and this is the custom base, customization piece that I think. Tony and Stefan were really referring to. The phase that we're in now and so. Anyways, that's my only comment on it, but thanks, thanks Phyllis, I think those are really, that's really helpful information for us to. Utilize going forward.
Thanks for that, Jim or Commissioner Rizzo, I see your hand raised. We were hoping to get through or provide space for the working group to provide comments before we transition, but if, if you had a quick thought.
Fine, I'll, I'll wait, I, I didn't know the format, excuse me.
Yeah, no problem, no problem, yeah, we wanted to give, give space for, for folks on the working group and then we'll definitely transition to you all here shortly. Margaret or any other members of the working group would, would you like to contribute or Bill, we haven't heard from you all yet.
Sure, I'm happy to jump in, well, first off, my hat's off to the whole team for putting this together and. Santa Rosa, we did this exercise, but we kind of did it the homegrown version where we did it with staff and it was a very challenging exercise. It sounds easy to come up with objective design standards, but you're trying to balance. Having some concrete standards with also facilitating flexibility for good design and, and so that's a challenge. And then you also want to think about how you're going to apply and enforce these things going forward, so I think it's a. Really wonderful toolkit. Kind of along the lines of thinking about things in the future, I really appreciate the discussion, thank you Phyllis for the overview of some of the bills that are coming. And Rich, to you as well about thinking about what's to come with more density, I think those are the things we can really anticipate. More density, less parking, more sensitive landscaping, we have the drought, it's going to be more and more on the front page. And I think this plan does that, if anything, you know, it could highlight it more or at least it could prepare for in the future as we morph towards all of those things. Just one other thought that I had and this might be. Somewhat more of a land use thing, but I think it can be achieved or addressed through a design feature is the idea on the mixed use project sites. The uses or the components of the structures that are not residential, I'm wondering what the thought is about. As you add in more community benefiting spaces, if those type of uses then translate into benefits or bonuses for the rest of the development. So if you add in childcare, if you add in arts and cultural spaces, if you add in things that have community benefits. Then perhaps the incentive to do that is you get even more bonus on the development standard, so. It's something in Santa Rosa that we are certainly considering as a way to, to encourage development and encourage those type of spaces, so. Those are my thoughts, really, I think it's a wonderful toolkit.
Appreciate that, Bill, that's great and I apologize, Commissioner Bandal, I kept calling you out as a member of the working group, apologize for that. Eli or Mayor Beckman, I know you're representing the city council, any thoughts you'd like to throw in the mix?
I don't have too much to add at this juncture, I just, you know, I echo the comments, you know, great support to, to the, the staff and consultant team that has put this together, I think. You know, what, what's most important to me, I think, kind of echoing Phyllis's comments is that Corder Madera is being proactive rather than reactive. In, in, you know, taking charge here and, and developing these standards. I agree with Phyllis's insight that, you know, as we go through this exercise now, we should definitely do it with an eye to. Any housing legislation or policy that's reasonably foreseeable, anything that we see brewing on the horizon right now, I think. As Phil said, I think, you know, the, the state legislature has certainly made it very clear what direction they're planning to take housing policy. And I think this is a great opportunity for us to prepare for that ahead of time, which is exactly what I see us doing and. You know, I think that's fantastic, really support this process, appreciate the, the work that's been done thus far, I don't really honestly have any substantial critiques to it. Appreciate the the work that's been done thus far. I don't really honestly have any substantial critiques to it. You know, I I think like like mostly other folks that that we've heard from, I I really agree with the work that's been done and I've been a part of this process since its inception, I believe. So so not much else to add right now.
Great. Thank you, Eli. So and if unless there's any other follow up thoughts from the working group or out of our team, if you wanted to add anything else, we can then go ahead now transition to allow space for the commissioners to add in their input and direction as well. And then, as I mentioned earlier, if there are members of the public that would like to contribute, we could come back to the public as well, maybe after that portion before we wrap up. I think we're planning to wrap up right around nine. So Commissioner Rizzo, we'll start with you.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I think my first question would just be, first of all, I want to thank everybody for all their work because it's a tremendous amount of work. The standards look finale. I think it's 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 definitely going in the right direction. I but I think my my biggest question is, is when we move away from discretionary review. I could honestly say that obviously our density needs to be increased. We don't really have a lot of standards for multifamily. What are the big differences between continuing with our discretionary review and going to a a standard where it's reviewed at a staff level? And and kind of what what are the state mandates? If something isn't approved after a few hearings? Like, what are the developers? What are the designing tip? What are their standards?
Adam, you want to start?
Yeah, and you know, it gets into some legal interpretations here, but I, you know, I think, look, there's one is you have to be very each bill that we're referring to, we've referred to SB thirty five. And then there's the really the Housing Accountability Act, which includes SB three thirty and just the nineteen eighty two legislation, which is sort of wrapped into one now. And then there's we've talked about future legislation, which again, we don't really know yet. So there's sort of three buckets right now out there in terms of state legislation, the SB thirty five one and and Martha, please. If I say misspeak, please correct correct me because I know Martha did a little bit more of a deep dive recently on this than I did, but I think SB thirty five really is ministerial review. So that one, if it qualifies for which again, can't do that right now in quarter Madera, but next and probably about three, four years, we should expect it to be projects to be eligible in quarter Madera. But if it qualifies, then it's a staff level review. I don't Martha, are there public hearings even involved with that process?
No public hearings and there's no sequo review either. So it's it's really a ministerial process, very similar to how you know, staff reviews a building permit. You're verifying it to make sure that it it meets standards and conforms.
Objective stand and that was, I I think we've talked about the in the at least the commission has mentioned the the project in Nevada. Again, I don't know if these are going to be built, but that was one on their grant, I guess, Grant Avenue there. And then there's also another one in Marin City that was at least proposed for both of those areas and were ultimately approved through this ministerial process. Then you have the Housing Accountability Act projects, which are broader sort of in scope. And those still do allow for our public process to play out. However, there are the limitations on the number of hearings and basically it says that if you you cannot change or modify the project or put conditions on the project that would have the effect of making the housing development infeasible or lower the density of that project itself. So if you do something that takes away units, then then you could have a problem with the developer or frankly, doesn't even have to be the developer. It could be an outside group that comes in and says, you're not allowed to really do do what you did. And then frankly, they would have there's a whole part of the state legislation which outlines frankly, a legal process that gets involved. And and sort of how that process plays out, you know, and and obviously, you know, that that you're into a whole different a lot of different decision points along the way that ultimately might lead there. And I think it's, you know, it's hard to predict exactly how that plays out, but I think the intention is that really the only thing you can apply to those housing development projects are objective standards that have been adopted and and there's time, you know, hopefully there there's sort of regulations about when you adopt those standards, you have to actually have adopted those objective standards before the application is deemed complete and et cetera, et cetera. So there's but but I think that's sort of the outline. I mean, it it could go any number of ways, but as soon as you start to use your discretionary process, like our design review process or something else, to modify the project in a way that the applicant says, well, that impacts our ability to build that many units, which is allowed by your general plan or allowed by your zoning. Then you have then you're into a world of where essentially, you know, a a a potential argument that you're not complying with the Housing Accountability Act or the town would not be. So that's there's a there's more, there's there's a lot more in the details of the legislation, but I'm trying to answer that as best I can.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that if that could be, you know, part of the policies in the design guidelines that we could as a discretionary review put forth as our findings. I'm just curious if if we just adopt the standards as a new plan. I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is between that having the discretionary review at a commission level to having it at the staff level and what the what the difference is at the end of the day. And I think, you know, I I read a lot of the bonus density law and I read some of the, I actually went through the whole a process of actually designing a process, a project and I'm finding that we and and I agree with Phyllis on this, that we really need to align ourselves with a density bonus law and kind of work backwards. Because if we want buildings to be a certain height and we know this this legislation is coming down the pipeline, we need to encourage developers to to build low income housing to get this this bonus density to to reach our maximum setbacks and height limits. And that's kind of where I where I kind of stand on it. I I'm I'm just a little confused at why it needs to be at a staff level and and not continue at the at the commission level if we can develop standards that can be adopted in our policy. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and I and I think we can. I think I don't think we're saying for that SB three thirty or the Housing Accountability Act. The question, right, I think what you're raising is the question becomes, do we for those projects? We know out there, we can't reduce the density of that applicant's project, right? But we, I think what you're saying is you we could still have essentially the toolkit as a as a reference document, but we could go through sort of the typical evaluation of what they're proposing before actually having them having to apply sort of the toolkit requirements from an architecture standpoint or a design standpoint or whatnot. And and yeah, I think that's that is a that is a possibility for that piece of legislation. I think that that could work. You just have to be.
I know it's complicated. I I just, you know, I read through it. There's there's some things that are a little bit too detailed and some I love the volume stuff, to be honest with you, coming from a design background, like tell me what I can build and then but some of the details get a little bit too too detailed. And I'm going to bring I brought this up in one of the last meetings. We were talking about the styles and rails of a of the doors being two inches. Well, well, what if the manufacturers don't have two inch doors and styles? Now, we're we're mandating that the contractor needs to build custom windows. So I think being a bit more flexible might help out all also in designing these buildings and being not so specific. But again, I I don't know exactly what the mandate is from the state to move forward with the standards. So I guess I just want to bring that up.
Yeah. Appreciate that, Commissioner Rizzo. And we're definitely noting all of these comments as we move through the process here as well, and we'll maybe follow up. Adam, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know. I was going to turn it to Stefan or Tony and if you have any thoughts on on that and and you know, I guess as it relates to maybe the Housing Accountability Act, because I think that's the one where theoretically, we still have a process, but just have limitations on on how far we can go in that process and.
Yeah, thanks, Adam. And I think, you know, one of the things to think about at a high level is that for those for the Housing Accountability Act kinds of projects, if the toolkit is present and is applicable, it's it's speaking to things that the existing zoning framework does not to Martha's point. So the role of design review, what we see in other jurisdictions that adopt more prescriptive standards, but choose to continue a designer view is that the it results in sort of a more focused conversation at the designer view level about the remaining questions that the zoning doesn't cover. And and so I in an ideal situation, that is instrumental in reducing the amount of time that's needed for discretionary review because it is easier to kind of narrow the topics down to a few that can be addressed. And I think the other thing I think to remember, you know, to add them to your point is that absolutely sort of reductions in density aren't, you know, are they move out of the question through changes to the zoning envelope that actually might alter the number of units. But typically, if you're in that phase with an applicant and you are opining about things like colors, materials, aesthetics, the applicant is the applicant wants wants the project to move forward. So there's an opportunity for that discussion to sort of have a positive outcome. And so, you know, I think that there is absolutely that opportunity for this toolkit to to be applicable to those kinds of projects. But, you know, something that is as prescriptive as the architectural standards, for example, maybe there's sort of a smaller portion of those that might be applicable. Or maybe, you know, a section of those becomes it becomes guidance. It becomes something that that can be used to guide the designer view outcome towards a more streamlined outcome. And then the the last thing I want to say that is sort of the an important kind of trigger for this is what Tony referred to in the the adjustments chapter is that the there are provisions to actually get relief from the dimensional standards in the code without needing to request a variance or go through some sort of discretionary waiver process. And that is, you know, you know, to to Commissioner Rizzo's point, that's to kind of help respond to some of these questions, like, does it really have to be two inches? You know, the the adjustments piece can can go to that and say, actually, no, it doesn't. And you can present something that is meeting the standards, but is not rising to that level where a waiver or variance would need to be requested.
Thank you for that, Stefan. Why don't we go and head and move to Commissioner Bundy?
Thank you. Good overview gives me a better sense of what we're really trying to accomplish going forward. Just to clarify in regard to building in the floodplain, basically, we need to have the threshold at the FEMA standard as far as thresholds for being above the floodplain. Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you mean from the 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 design, basically the design flood elevation. Yeah, and and you know, and I think it's just a matter of there are different rules for commercial versus residential in that regard and what uses can dip into that, you know, what the design flood elevation is for different uses. So in any case, but certainly, yeah, it has to comply with FEMA regulations.
Okay, good. They, yeah, that's the the main issue that that I was looking at in regard to this. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Yes, Commissioner Metcalfe.
Yes, it's because of what Adam just said, mentioning commercial. I think as we have these discussions, we have to, and I've made some notes as we've talked, land use policies, both residential and commercial, are the heart of many of the issues and the decisions made by the council. And I don't think they realize it. Because these decisions ensure the long term permanent health of our community. It underpins all the programs that we have as well as the infrastructure. It affects bringing in the dollars we need. And I think as we look at this right now, the state is I would call it destroying, but that's a personal opinion. The single family zoning and has put its emphasis all on residential or mixing residential with commercial, but they're going to get to commercial also. I think they've got a great need to put their thumbprint on everything and I've worked at the state level, so I know. And I think this is something we all, as we look at this as an overview, we cannot look at this one piece by itself. We have to fine tune it. This is what we're dealing with now, but we have to look at the other pieces of what's going to happen to single family zoning. What's going to happen when you can have under twenty four hundred, what had been a twenty four hundred lot divided into in half and having two duplexes and also on each one of those lots to way to use with no oversight whatsoever. So and they talk about mixed use and adding residential, basically sometimes as a second story in commercial, or how is that going to start affecting commercial? So I hope we look at a big picture and I hope the council members understand that land use is the key to all the decisions that are going to have to be made in the future.
Yeah, and one thing, I mean, we do have backup slides. I know we were going to pull up the general plan map. That's really the base base map that we should think about when we're talking about existing land uses in quarter Madera. And so a large part of our town, especially the commercial areas are you've seen the map before many, you know, many times, but it's that turquoise color that which is allows for it's called mixed use commercial, which allows for residential and commercial. And and that's sort of, you know, the the baseline in terms of the overarching ability for you know, I guess what we said, we've we've mapped and what we're going to what we're going to come back to with is zones for all of those areas where housing is currently allowed in current quarter Madera and we may now widen that we were sort of focused on before with the multifamily areas, which are all the commercial corridors and, you know, along the highways and then stretching into some other areas of town. And then it sounds like we'll we'll also look at the single family areas as well. And and so you'll see that's that's the the starting point and there are certain ways where we can incentivize certain things versus others. I mean, you you know, you guys were were all part of the the hotel ordinance and and I think we have an application now for the hotel and so but mixed use is a is a important part of our land use strategy. So certainly you know, we'll we'll keep that in mind as we start to think about the toolkit, but in any case, it starts to come down to, I think, development a development analysis on the private sector side, really, and and what makes sense in terms of a program that private developers are going to see as appealing or not. So anyways, that's just a general. So anyways, that's just a general comment back to your what you were saying. I don't think it changes. It's not meant to change your comment, but just we do have a framework, I think, for which from which to start. Talking about the big picture and land use discussions and whatnot.
Thank you, Commissioner Metcalf and Adam. Commissioner Bendel or Chair Chase, any thoughts? Yes, Commissioner Bendel, you should be able to unmute yourself. If not, I can help. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
I guess I'm, well, I agree a hundred percent with with the comments made by. Commissioner Rizzo and Commissioner Metcalf. I think it really, really good comments. I think this is a tremendous body of work also and. And. By this, by my next comment, I don't mean to say that it isn't because I truly can see the amount of work that went into it, but just. I I am disturbed. By the lack of oversight. That's provided in any of this process. Because I have seen, you know, what a couple of bullies and threats of lawsuits. Can do when there isn't a very long and thoughtful process in develop in a big development. And I'm kind of wondering, and I'd like to hear from the the attorney on this. What what the implication is when you try to change a zone? And put in multifamily housing into a single family area. Is that a taking?
In a word, no, it would not be considered a taking. No one is forced to. Remove their single family. No one is forced to develop multifamily. It does give other property owners in the zone more options. But. Under the strict definition of taking, you're the individual property owner who does not wish to have a multifamily unit. Multifamily project on their property still has an economically viable use of their property. So that that sort of change is well within a city's. Discretion.
And so then, when you have a multifamily unit, this is this is another question, not a continuation of that. When you have a multifamily unit and then. I don't know, does that? Just trying to think about how that would look, but if you have a multifamily unit and someone wants to put an ADU. Within their multifamily unit. Or within their unit that's in the multifamily unit. What happens? What what kind of oversight does that have?
That's a very interesting question. I assume that you may you're you're thinking of a condominium type of.
Yeah, or I was looking at the pictures in the toolkit of the duplexes. Some of them, those duplexes could be quite large, you know, several bedrooms and living room, dining room, kitchen. So somebody might decide to put an ADU. Or make make some of that space into an ADU. And I'm, it just gets.
That's already allowed, I believe, under the current municipal code. There are, I think, space requirements. I haven't memorized it, so I would have to get back to you, but. Assuming that there is enough space, physical space on the lot, that can already occur.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, sorry.
I'm curious about all the different. You know. Repercussions and and, you know. Angles that could come up.
These pro housing legislation, they've been long in coming wave after wave, and each one does restrict local government discretion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's kind of interesting. Just from. I think it's we we work and, you know, town halls right off of Willow. Willow's an interesting, if you ever want to take a look, we're happy to walk with folks down that street because and Commissioner Rizzo, you're right there. But it's it's sort of this where you have this house type. Building typology. I mean, these are structures, yet a lot of those structures are multifamily housing units. And so, I don't know, I mean, that's it's just an example of how and and obviously that happened many, many years ago, the those sorts of typologies. I also think it's important to know this stuff. It's a gradual process. I mean, it's it's the development. It's it's when we see legislation and and see changes and things are allowed, like the ADUs. It's it. It's not that every, you know, overnight, all the all of this development is going to happen and change the character of that neighborhood in in one fell swoop. You know, maybe over time, there is a change, but it's over many years. I would just. Keep that, you know. That's one perspective, but Willow, I I just I just like. To use that as an example of of this discussion about single family zoning areas or single family character. And yet you have multifamily structures within that. Within that. Street and it there, you know, I don't know, Commissioner Rizzo, you can speak to that better than I, having lived there for many years, but. I I think it tends, besides there, I know there are some parking concerns around there, but. But from a character and a form standpoint, it's a it's a wonderful street in terms of. Being close to downtown and location and livability.
And it comes back to the volume question, you know, just keeping the volume to a. Reasonable size. But definitely parking becomes an issue because if if like like. A few of the commissioners have said, you you could split a lot and then and effectively have four. Four units on a lot, you could have eight cars. Really fast, even if. You know, the state law, if you if you're within a half mile of a which Willow is. Of a of a of a major transit station, you can definitely have eight eight units there real fast. Or I should say eight cars, four units. So it's definitely a little concern on the parking, but as as far as the people I. And the volumes, as long as the volumes kind of stay where they're at, and we don't have these huge buildings, it it hasn't really. Personally affected me. I I enjoy having the people around. But yeah, parking is definitely a a concern. We also have commercial issues here, too. So I'm in a very unique environment where we've got. The City Hall and major or or some of our major commercial in the little town where people park, so. Maybe in other parts of the. Of the town where you don't have commercial, it would be a bit different on the parking scenario. But parking definitely is is an issue.
Thanks for the questions, Commissioner Bendel and the follow up, Commissioner Rizzo. I just wanted to, Patty, I see your hand raised. I just want to allow Chair Chase, if you had any thoughts you wanted to throw into the mix before we come back. To the working group members.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And this is a manual of life in this booklet. It's really significant. It's very helpful. To projecting a pathway for the town. But I agree with Commissioner Rizzo in that. Let's set sort of an outer stake and work back and make sure that we can control our destiny of how big are these units, how big are the volumes? And with the density bonuses, what's the biggest that we're willing to allow to be seen here? I don't want to start with what seems like a. A good standard and then be shocked at the density bonus as it creeps in. And the devils in the details in a lot of these. Chapters. So. I I I would vote to. Stay within the the smaller of the two categories, T three and T four. And work from that and stay out of T five if it's at all possible. So that's all I have to say because we are long on breath here tonight.
Great. Thank you for the input. Thanks for that. So Patty, we'll come back to you, and I just want to remind folks, members of the public, if you did have a thought you wanted to share, we do have a little bit of time left here at the end. So if you do want to raise your hands, oh, go ahead, Adam.
And Dave, maybe we can go back to that. Recommended zone slide and just have that. You know, I did. We didn't get Patty, I think, said those look like the right zones. I I heard Commissioner, you know, Chairman Chase, just. Peter just talk about it as well, but. You know. You know, that that. Sort of direct comment on this is is somewhat helpful, just so we. Yeah, Martha and I sort of in terms of next steps, we start to sort of. Craft the toolkit and customize it based on some of these, you know, the zones that. We're we're talking about here. And then single family is, you know, we've heard tonight loud and clear. That we need to address that as well. So I think that's that's certainly something that I think also up to Tony and Stefan, you guys touched on and. Your recommended. Area there, but. And maybe since density bonus is coming up. I I know Stefan, you touched on that. I don't know if it makes sense to 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 go over that again. But. I I wanted to sort of just try to come back to this as that this is sort of the core. One of the one of the major pieces, the next steps that we're gonna staff's gonna work on.
Yeah, that I I'd be happy to maybe make a comment, Adam, about density bonus is that. The what the toolkit tries to do is to. Allow for the density bonus to be delivered through additional height. To allow the building to get taller as opposed to. Additional bulk. Or making a building footprint larger. And there are some examples now of jurisdictions in California. Largely through area plans. That have been successful in doing this. And so there's that sort of anticipation, I think, that's sort of built into the toolkit. The other thing that is sort of key to sort of think about is that. We thought about the parameters of the thirty five percent density bonus. Up to the fifty percent density bonus. And that largely the footprint that's allowed in the base and bonus. But zoning. Is gonna be slightly ahead of that. So with the idea that if you can set forward a. Prescriptive project. That you can keep at a discretionary level. You actually might be in a better situation. Than needing to accept a. A by right project. That actually would need to, you know, be would would only require staff to deal. And this is something I think that really will largely come into play. In other parts of the county where more intense development is anticipated. We think about downtown Centerfell. Maybe down central Nevada, for example. That there there could be an advantage to. You know, the toolkit sort of keeping you ahead of. The. The developers realizing a certain size of project only through the density bonus. And I think we sort of recognize that density bonus projects, sometimes they become sort of a numbers game. Sometimes there is. You know, a series of back and forth negotiation that occurs that is sort of just driving getting towards doing a bigger building. So there is that question here is that could some of that be sort of head off? Just by sort of the establishment of sort of this basin bonus. Tier that is built into the into the toolkit. So it's absolutely designed to accommodate the density bonus. But in the case of like Centerfell, they are thinking about it as a way to drive a local bonus program. More in keeping with what was discussed previously, that it could really encourage. Positive outcomes that are more specific to downtown Centerfell. In exchange for. For for the granting of that bonus.
Great, thank you for that. And Patty, appreciate your patience. You're up.
I just wanted to follow up on Margaret's concern about the ADUs and condos. Wouldn't it still fall under the CCNRs or do they lose their discretion to contain that?
Yeah, there was a housing bill that basically precluded CCNRs from not allowing ADUs. So they've been trumped.
So does me. Thank you.
Great, thank you for the question, Patty. So I'm. Oh, go ahead, Adam.
I did see we have a hand up from, I think, Suzy Beatty and the.
That's right. Yep, that's what I was about to transition to. Yep, yep, I'm just gonna bring up, we have a timer, since there's only one comment, I don't know if it's going to be an issue, but. Suzy, we're gonna go ahead and turn it over to you and you should be able to, oh, looks I've got a couple other takers here. Suzy, you should be able to unmute yourself. I'm gonna go ahead and start the three minute timer here. And you are up. Can you unmute yourself there, Suzy?
There we go. Am I unmuted now? I'm on my phone, so I'm not used to using it. Hi.
Yes.
So I am just becoming familiar with this part of what's of of what you're doing, and so this question may be completely inappropriate, but. Landfill, all of our landfill comes to mind and how our land moves right now. And so. Where does the weight of all these big new things come into play if if indeed we end up, you know, having to add? Add to our building? Is that falling to this department or not? It may not. I'm learning and I have to say also. Thank you so much. This is a tremendous amount of work you guys are all doing. So anyway, that's all.
Thank you, Suzy. Appreciate that. Appreciate the thoughts. And again, all this information is being recorded with part of the summary. Thank you. Adam, I don't know.
You know, I it's it's a small sort of like a structural engineering soils question that. I'm not really an expert on, maybe one of the other, I'm sure somebody else on the on this panel can speak to. It is sort of a, I know, an issue that we think of when. With the the settlement issues that have happened over time. In Corte Badera and then thinking about groundwater and and whatnot, but I'm not really. I could tell you it's considered on a site by site basis when construction projects are constructed, but on an overall scale. You know, if town wide, that's a different question that I. I. You know, an interesting one, because I've actually read some. Some concern about. You know. In terms of, I think, San Francisco, they were finding that the actual. Area of some areas of town is holding a little bit as a result of all the weight.
Right.
The area, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Next, we're gonna move to David Zek. David, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Yeah, hey, everybody. Thanks for all you're doing. I'd just like to ask why Commissioner Metcalf is so against. The elimination of the single family zoning options. I mean, we we need way more housing in California as the census that was published yesterday just showed. It seems like it's actually less polluting to to destroy it. It's it's community creating. I mean, there are two people on this call that are less than thirty years old, being Eli, the mayor, and probably myself. And I don't, I just don't understand why there's so much concern with. The single family zoning and then. State Senator Weiner's SB eight, ten. And thirty five. So, I mean, I could go back and probably re-listen to this whole conversation, but. If Commissioner Metcalf could just address that real briefly. Once more, I would love that.
Thanks for the question. Sure, go ahead.
I am not against multi-unit zoning. I live in a condominium. I am against the idea of overbuild to the point where it affects the environment and there isn't the infrastructure to support it. And maintain it. For example, we're looking at a drought now. And we're being told all of these. Ways we have to save water and yet people are talking about, oh, we ought to build four thousand more units here. I think we have to look at big pictures and we look at too many things piece by piece and it makes no difference if you're under thirty, over thirty, over sixty. Et cetera. You want to be in an environment that is safe. That maintains a lifestyle that is safe. And you want to do things appropriately. So that's a quick answer. I'd be more than happy if you want to send me an email. I'll be more than happy to answer to you and send you. Copy of the bills.
Appreciate it, Commissioner Metcalf, and thanks for the question, David. Now, I don't see any other hands raised. I'm gonna turn it back over to Adam to talk through next steps.
Sorry, I guess. Sort of mentioned this along the way and throughout the conversation tonight, but really. You know, our our next steps is for Martha and I to go back, take what we heard, potentially, you know, talk to. Our our team here with Stefan and Tony as well. And and try to start to customize this. And I think what we'd like to do is work. With the working group as we have in the past, as we sort of draft some recommendations. Meet with them again, you know, while I know Martha said six months, I I'm I'm really would like to try to. Sort of segue this piece of work again, phase one implementation of this toolkit into the discussion of. Really kicking off and starting a a broader, more broad conversation late summer about. Housing in general and opportunities that we're gonna have to look at as part of the housing element process. So I'm hoping it's a little less than six months. To be honest, and I'd like to come back. I think Martha and I would like to come back at to the Planning Commission. After talking with the working group and and discussing some recommendations for customization. With maybe another workshop, but. We need to try to get to sort of a zoning ordinance amendment that's going to implement this. And again, we're just talking about. Implementing this now for the subset of potential applications we could get pursuant to the state legislation. So. I know we could spend probably a full year, if not two. Going through every detail of the toolkit, trying to customize it to get it exactly how we think what works for our existing. Needs and conditions, but I I sort of want to emphasize and make sure everyone realizes that we, Martha had the slides of our current. Objective standards and our zoning ordinance today versus what we are looking at with the toolkit. And the need to really get this phase one strategy implemented and and into the process. So in in any case, that's Martha, do you want to add to that at all?
Yeah, I think you've covered it, Adam. I think we're thinking next step would be a meeting with the working group where we present some some suggestions of. The mapping and then also possible changes to some of the the standards and then come back to the commission. Before moving forward with a recommendation to the Town Council on a zoning ordinance amendment.
Great. Well, thank you both for that. With that, just want to remind you all that we do have a project website that's. Hosted through the town's website. The shorter URL is is bit.ly or B I T dot L Y. Forward slash C M dash odds, so please stay tuned there. And if you have any follow up questions, you see the email addresses on the screen to Adam and Martha. And with that, unless the team has anything else, I believe we are done with the meeting tonight. So thank you so much for your time. I'm not sure if Commissioner. Chase or do you need to formally close this meeting? I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, and before we before we close this and move on to our our sort of other, I guess we have some minutes and whatnot reports, but. I just want to thank, you know, our working group members and all of our planning commissioners. For really diving into this toolkit and really. Asking some great questions and providing some good comments for us to work with tonight. And we're relying on on your sort of. Continued involvement and guidance as we move forward. So thank you again just for spending the time on this and and of course our. Consultant team as well and Stefan and Tony for helping prepare for this meeting and and a good conversation tonight and some explanations. So thank you.
Great.
I will we'll save this, we're gonna save this. On our website too, I think, this actual presentation. So in the future, if you ever need to. Refer back to some of the things that were discussed, you can find it on our website.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Phyllis, or Commissioner Metcalf, if you would, didn't mind just emailing me. If you want to take down my email, I could take down your email as well.
Why don't you, if you go to the town website, there's a way to get into my email. Why don't you do that?
Sure, that'd be great.
And that'll enable me to get back to you because I think you misunderstand. I am not trying against. Multi-units. I am talking about if they're going to, people should know in advance if they're gonna affect single. Residential zoning. We need a mix. We need to look at big pictures.
Oh, yeah, and you're concerned about the resources is really interesting, too.
Okay.
I think good point.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Okay, are we back to being a commission here for the moment? Yeah, you're there.
Yeah, I think we are. I think we got our. Okay, small group together again, so good.
You know, we could wax on for quite some time, I'm sure, many points about this tonight. But that would take more time than we have. But. I would like to know who went to the last town council meeting. Mr. Rizzo. Go ahead and tell us about that.
Well, I I came at the tail end of a lot of financial planning. So if I if I mess some things up, because I I think of, you know, I'm the baby of the group, maybe you guys have. Been on a few of the meetings, I'll try to summarize the best I can. And please, if anybody wants to interject and correct me, I will not feel bad at all. But one of the first, you know, the some of the pertinent things that happened in the meeting, there was a first reading of an ordinance. Regarding smoking in multifamily housing units and. So I I I think that everybody. On the town council was was in favor of of this of moving forward with this ordinance. Adam, did you have anything to add on that one?
Just that it was a, it was sort of an update to an existing ordinance that we had in the books regarding. Prohibition on smoking in in multifamily apartments and other areas in town. So it it sort of just took. Took the needle which was here and pushed it further.
So there was something on cannabis that I I kind of, I I kind of got half of it. For medicinal purposes, did you? Can you please clarify that? I I kind of missed exactly.
I asked Bob Avasio to check something. I was curious as to when they were talking about adding marijuana to what is excluded. And at first they didn't include medicinal and then they went back and talked about medicinal. I asked Bob if he would check to see. Whether or not those who are in chemotherapy, how they are advised to take marijuana and do doctors prefer smoking. To edibles or I don't know how else. I've never had pots, I don't know. And Bob did check with a friend who's an oncologist who said. That all smoking is dangerous to the environment and that doctors are now telling their patients to use. Edible edibles and other types. So that's what that was about. It was a question I asked.
It's more about they don't, they don't need to smoke to. To get the 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 care that they need through.
Right.
So the ban, so the ban should apply to, I think, all smoke.
Including medicinal, yes.
Okay. And then the the other two really big items. Were related to finance, the pension obligation bonds and. And and a resolution approving the execution delivery of a lease certificates, which is a little misleading because it's kind of a loan. And, you know, basically. The town and Todd and administrative and a finance group has done a. Kind of a a deep dive into how how we could. You know, best use our, we've got a really good credit rating now, so we've been moved from an AA to a triple A. And, you know, how we can leverage that to better finance all the projects that we have in town. And so they got a really good rate. Close to two percent and and we need to finance our towns. You know, retirement plans and, you know, there's three, there's three tiers there or three or four tiers. We've got the Calpers. Three and then there's some debt and then we also have a pension, you know, the pension trust, sorry, excuse me. We have the pension trust and a retirement health. And so the goal is to be able to. To to not count on Calpers to come up with their seven percent. Todd didn't really feel like. Like historically, over the next twenty or thirty years that we're gonna do seven percent, that they're gonna do seven, seven percent. They did great this year. I think they were up to like twenty percent, but it's just because the stock market's been fantastic. So the idea was to be able to level out the the financing so that. So that we can provide our 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 pension to our city staff. Health and and retirement funds. I know you guys might know a little bit more about this, but that's kind of what I got out of it. It was more of a, of, you know, how do we leverage our our money to. To build some of the the infrastructure that we need, including the town town hall and some of the other things and and come out. Better in the end.
That sounds great. Okay, I see Ann Danforth has got an octopus there in front of her.
It was that.
Yeah, I and I could just add on the the one item that may, you know, I presented the. But it was a relative, it was an update to the wireless.
Sorry, Adam, yeah, I I was gonna.
No, no, don't worry, don't worry. Trust me, it's it's forgettable. But I did want to mention it. It was more for the right away. It didn't relate to the zoning ordinance. It was more for our policy for right away and preparing for. Sort of applications that we may get for wireless telecommunication facilities or or. Industry and the and the companies who want to place those on utility poles and whatnot. So we've updated our policy based on. Recent court decisions and a review with an expert in the field who actually represented us in our legal proceedings with. With the FCC and so anyways, that was that was updated and just. Wanted to wanted to mention that.
Okay. I do, yeah.
I want add a question for Adam. Somebody whose name I don't remember, but their email is Marin Kombasha, something like that. Seems to have copied the entire world with his problem. And what my question is, is I thought it was in public works. Having to do with his lack of permit for a dock and how did you get stuck with this?
No, it's fine, it's fun. I, yeah, I should have followed up, yeah, because I know he. Brian Ingersheim, I think is his name. He's a resident, owns a home on a lagoon too and and. Madera Gardens and so he. In any case, was doing. He he emailed all of the commissioners and all the council people as well, and I think it's just really wants to air concerns that he has about how. The town is enforcing some of its regulations and so. Fortunately, we had, you know, I think Commissioner Bundy actually spoke with him in person and I've been speaking with him and so I think. You know. Certainly. We've let him know that permits are required. We're happy to, you know, we're we're do what's necessary to help help him through the process. In an as expeditiously a way as possible and then I, it is, there are, and this is, there are overlaps between. Really, at the end of the day, it's 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 similar to. It's a, it is a building permit requirement, any construction, it is construction. The same way that the dock that actually all of you saw, I mean, it's a different. Entity but a or a different sort of environment, but if you recall, we had the whole design review and over the dock out in Paradise. That rate, at the end of the day, though, they still have to apply for building permits to do actual, build the structure. And so it's not a, the the public works may have some tangential permits related to that they all, you know, grading or encroachment. Or things like that. But it's really falls under the building code in terms of building structures that are safe and secure and in a way that meet sort of the. Standards for construction. And so that that's what ultimately it falls under the building department. He's gonna have to come in and work with us there. And in the meantime, we're, you know, I know, yes, we're we're gonna. Work on on his concerns and address his concerns, sort of broader concerns about policies and or practices. And and how to. Sort of make. Make this a an easy process potentially for for not just him, but for others. Have to go through this.
If I may ask a follow up, in his emails from him and from his wife. They mentioned that several people, I think they even named names of people who had built docks or added docks and did not have permits. Do they have to come back now and have an inspection and pay for a permit?
We did not receive any information from him that about who or what had done that. So, no, that's not. As part of something that we are aware of. We we are aware of many people in the last few years who have received permits, so. That's what we're focused on. We'll focus on his as well.
All right, thank you, Phyllis.
That was included under the Planning Director Report, so. Since I I did want to touch on that, since you all got copied on that and it was probably something I should have addressed.
Regarding, I I'm just gonna insert this, however inappropriately, the caller earlier who said somebody had a. Bias against sing against multifamily housing. I would dare say that single family dwelling. Single family residences are right. You can't outlaw single family residences. Just because.
Well, you need a balance.
Yeah, so.
I think it's a, yeah, as I think, yeah, and we maybe we'll get into this again. I I just note that we're likely to hear a lot of some, you know, there is a. As we go further into the housing conversation, I think there are, there's, there's strong feelings on. On different sides of this issue, so we're likely to hear more and have more, whether they're quarter bedera residents or. Beyond, start talking about these issues locally, so.
But I thought it was the policy of the committee of the commission not to answer public comment.
Yeah, I think this was just a workshop and so it's not a formal. It was not a really, it was set up to just be a sort of a, I don't want to call it a free for all. We tried to have an agenda, but. It was more of a workshop and an informal meeting than than any sort of following any strict procedures, but. It's a good point. I mean, you're you're right, we we didn't adhere to that strictly and I think. So, you know, I think.
That's why I asked.
Could have been a fine response. Could have been a fine response as well. We could have just said, we'll hold that and you can follow up.
Started sounding like a little bit of argument rather than comment.
Right. We'll have to hold the line on that in the future meetings because they're going to get more comment, more people involved. Yeah.
Yep.
It's an organized group that wants far more development than I think this county could even handle.
Well, let's not, I mean, on our public meeting right now. So.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna.
Peter, I just had one more question. Yeah. So so we did talk about some infrastructure stuff at the town council meeting as part of my report and we talked, the sanitary district actually had a report out and we did approve a an analysis of of our sewer system and which which kind of just, you know, sparked something with what Phyllis had said about the infrastructure and and Adam, is that is that something that 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 RJ needs to consider as part of his analysis for future development? Like, you know, if we are going to be going to one to four units as part of the sewer system, I mean, you know, I I I can I can agree with Phyllis. I mean, there's only so much that infrastructure that we can handle no matter how many houses we have.
You comfortable?
I can't answer that. Yeah, I'm not gonna. I mean, we could talk about it. I think certainly infrastructure is part of a formal analysis. It will just have, you know, state legislations, this is where SEQA becomes an issue and sort of those discussions usually get evaluated during that process. But, you know, some of the stuff we're seeing sort of goes around SEQA and those analyses, although I will say, you know, there are findings that for housing that that do allow still that level of review. If it's really not, you're not going to have any infrastructure for new housing. And you can make very factual evidence, evidentiary sort of findings about that, you know, then then you may be able to sort of push back on that. So we'll let's talk about that. Well, I'm sure we'll get into that. I know water is a similar sort of infrastructure need that has come up quite a bit. And so there'll be a lot of discussions about that as as we're going to be talking about, you know, all of the cities are in the Bay Area are going to be talking about new, you know, 440,000 new housing units in the middle of a drought, right? You know, so I mean, obviously, that is over the next eight years, but it still is a planning consideration. So.
We did have a building moratorium from the Water District several years ago, and that lasted a couple of years. I don't know if anybody remembers how long it was, but what about 30 years ago, 40 or so?
Okay.
I'm going to ask if anybody has any comments on the meeting minutes or a motion to approve.
Don't move.
Okay.
Peter, can I make one comment about infrastructure?
Not. We can't. We can't make this. This is not the forum for doing it. We can't really, we can't really do that. We can't.
I just want to tell everyone that I recently participated in the sidewalk restoration program.
Oh, okay.
Going on right outside my house right now. And I can't tell you how wonderful the whole thing was smooth, easy. Dimitri Copeland is the intern.
Keep going. That's great.
Fabulous.
No, I've I've said, all right, you that for that you can you can go, you get an extra two minutes.
He's a wonderful young man, intelligent, friendly, helpful. I I really, I'm so, I was so impressed with the whole process. It's an easy application. It was responded to, you know, within a very short period of time. It's a tremendous help for the older sidewalks, especially in in my neighborhood. It's it's a tremendous help for me. You have to get estimates, which was easy and it was approved right away. I can't, I've just you know, I really think anybody who needs to think about replacing a sidewalk or, you know, doing that kind of work should really look into that kind of program. And I'm going to say something at the town council meeting, too, because I really think it's it's tremendous that the town is willing to help with that kind of improvement.
Oh, I will pass along to RJ.
Okay, Phyllis.
I I just want to say that we are very blessed in this town to have excellent staff people. We know best the people, you know, in the planning and building department, but all of the staff does a very fine job. And I think sometimes we take it for granted too much. I'm glad to hear Margaret make these comments. I think we all should remember when we have interaction with staff that is positive to let other people know, because we have a lot to be proud of the staff in this town, in this town.
Yes, indeed, we do. And all you have to do is talk to somebody from another town and you find out that they have a different experience, right?
Being kind, Peter. I was keeping it.
All right, who else? Who else wants to?
We like you guys.
All right.
Pile on, right? Okay. All right. So I think we're going to adjourn this free for all. So thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.
Adam, don't forget my town hall plans, please. Thank you.